All right, you guys ready?
Yes, sir.
I have 6:30, we will call the July 7th Benning and zoning commission to order. Roll call, Brooks.
Here.
Chuck.
Present.
Brian.
Present.
Thomas. Alyssa. Rob.
Here.
We have a quorum. Item number three, I would look for an approval of the agenda.
So moved.
Second.
Motion a second to approve the agenda, any comments? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Item number four, consent calendar. Motion to approve.
So moved.
Second.
Motion a second to approve the consent calendar, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Item number five, since Alyssa's not here, I need somebody else to approve the minutes.
So moved.
Chuck.
Second.
Rob. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Item number six, this is where we do public comments, anybody wishing to address the commission may do so now, if you are on the agenda, we will get to you. Anyone? Okay. Hearing none. Item number seven is a home occupation. For... Let's see, home occupation for 1809 South Locust Avenue, Heidi?
Yes, present.
Hello, Heidi, come on up. Don't trip on the cord. If you just push the button there, the red light will come on.
That's a little gray button.
There we go, perfect. You just state your name and address for the record and let us know what you'd like to do.
Heidi Early Stone Arrow, and I would like to open a in-home daycare.
Okay, anybody have any questions? Patrick?
We did receive two emails on the conditional use permit there, you are both in front of you, one was forwarded by Barb and one I received this morning from a neighbor, so you should have those in front of you.
Okay. Any other calls on this, Patrick?
No other calls on this.
Okay. Chuck?
Heidi, how many kids do you plan on having?
I plan on having 12 at this time.
All ages?
Yep, all ages right now.
Is that dictated by state license?
Currently, I don't plan to get a state license right now, just a city license, more so, I'm just not looking for, at this time, it's just with all the grief with state. But I do plan to follow the state guidelines and recommendations.
So, Heidi, one of the emails says there are four adults and three kids presently at this address, so your 12 will include your three kids as well?
Yes.
So it'd be nine additional?
Yes.
Thank you.
Do you have a fence around your yard?
Yes, I do.
And one of the emails talked about busy intersection Maple and Locust, have you experienced that?
I don't have an issue with my kids at that section, more so because we're never in the front yard, really, when we are, I, my husband, or my parents are in the front yard with my kids. The only time it's ever really busy is when it's school time, because we do live right by Robert Bennis and the intermediate school, so I avoid that area like the plague, because it's horrible.
Anybody else here for this? You are? If you'd like to come up, would you like to say something, or you're just here for this?
I'm just a supporter.
Okay. If you do, would you come out, please, thank you. We'll let him speak now. Just give us your name.
My name is Chris.
Do I have to press?
You're good.
My name is Keen, address is 1712 on Locust. And I know that the property is directly, like she said, right in front of the elementary. And if you are thinking about, even she said that it's so busy that she avoids it like a plague, so based on what I understand, the daycare will be from, school time will be probably from 7 to 8, the arrival for her kids or her customers, and then the time that they leave will be the same time as when school release, logically, right? So if she avoids that, that even increased nine more kids, it'll be nine more cars, and that area really, the principal actually has to stay out there to make sure the traffic. I don't know if you all know where the location of it is, so if you can bring up the location, or if you know where the location is. And really, people within that area, the only outlet going out from that suburb is from that entrance, just heading towards Royal Venice, or you have to go back all the way to Ironside or Locust, which is straight towards Sioux Boulevard.
Okay, does anybody else have any questions? Oh, wasn't that nice?
Perfect, yes. Yep, that is the, where the B is, is that's the location of it. And going out, if you go down, it'll be where the school is. Yep, so there is no exit except that exit, or you have to go north. So at this time, even with nine cars, and that's the starting of it, and I just don't know how many more cars will be there.
Okay. Anybody have any questions?
So really taking a survey at the meantime to see when school starts, how the traffic flows will actually help.
Okay. Anybody else have anything?
I have something for the application.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Heidi, will some of the kids that you watch, will they be after-school kids? Or will you think it'll be all strictly under kindergarten age?
At this time, I don't have any after-school kids, just because I don't want to put that out there that I do after-school care, because, I don't know, I'm, currently, I am a nurse, and I'm doing this because childcare's so expensive at this time, it's...
So, it's either going to be summer only, or kids that are under five?
Yep, pretty much, pretty much, I'm not going to, more than likely, I'm not going to do after-school care unless it's, the only exception I would ever do that is if it's maybe a sibling, and if I had the room for it, and at this time, I don't have the room for it because I'm at capacity right now, so.
Thank you.
Yep. And can I address his concern as well? And concern to the timeline stuff, a lot of the families, because I did post a need, like, just kind of like before I did quit my other job, or kind of give them notice that I was starting a daycare, whatever, I did put out there, like, what is the current daycare need, and there's, there was a lot of families who were like, hey, what's this? Like, what's, the families that have reached out to me, either are teachers or work out of town and would be taking the road, or the gravel road going out, they wouldn't be going back into the traffic, because I know what he means, and a lot of the parents would be picking up after the school, in the afternoon traffic is over, so that's the extra nine cars, and a lot of the kids would be siblings, so in hindsight, it's only an extra four.
So you're saying drop-off would be before school hours, pickup would be way after?
More than likely, pickup would be after, way after school would be done with, and then pit, drop-off would be the only ti, there's one, there's one family that mentioned they may drop off about 9, so, yeah, so.
Do you know if some of the people that you're currently talking to, obviously, we don't know who your future clients might be, but the ones that you're currently visiting with, are they already dropping kids off at school? And they're just, they would be dropping off a younger sibling?
Drop, as of right now, no, they're not in school right now, they're, right now, they're five and under, so they're just starting school.
I just wondered if this is adding nine more vehicles, or if some of these nine vehicles are already going there to drop off kids at?
No, and the nine kids are, one, like, for instance, one of the clients, or future potential clients are a junior kindergarten, and the school provides free transportation for them, so it's not even extra, and my son is a junior kindergarten one, so it wouldn't even be extra, because if there's a way the school could maneuver that wisely, it'd be nice.
Anybody else have any questions? No, if not, I would entertain a motion.
I'd move to approve.
Motion and a second to approve, any other discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. There you go.
Thank you.
Go get them. Next up, number eight, a home occupation for 1408 West Creekside Drive. Brittany? Hello, Brittany?
Hi.
Welcome to the firing line. What would you like to do?
So currently, I have Small Wonders preschool that is located at what was or is Beaver Valley Lutheran Church, obviously, we got hit by a tornado, so that kind of put a wrench in things, we're looking at roughly three years' construction time, give or take troubles and all that stuff, so I am looking to move the preschool into my home while we wait for construction to finish, so probably three years.
Any calls on this one, Patrick?
I did have one call, it was just a neighbor saying that they were fine with a new business in the area.
Okay.
That was all I received on this one.
We'll get, see you in a minute. Anybody else have any questions for Brittany?
I do.
Hold on. Up here? Go ahead.
So Brittany, how many, you said 12, no more than 12 at a time in your application, correct?
Right.
How many classes and how frequent are the classes?
So we have two classes on Monday, Wednesday, Friday, so one is from 8:30 to 11:00, the other one is from 11:45 to 2:45, so kind of within school hours, and then Tuesday, Thursday, we have one class in the morning. And then we provide transportation for the kiddos, for most of them use our transportation that we provide, as many of the kids come from Valley Springs, and they don't have any other way to get to preschool, so, yeah, most of them would be transported, there's only two that are on the list right now that their parents would provide transportation for them.
Anyone else up here? If you'd come up and state your name, that'd be great.
1412 West Creekside Drive.
Oh, right over here.
I'm Ann Bukowski, I live at 1412 West Creekside Drive, right next door. And I was curious of the two off-street parking spaces, where they would be.
Just in our driveway, because they would come and drop off, and then leave right away.
Okay, because I was wondering, so they're going, because, I'm sorry, I shouldn't be, I don't know who I'm addressing, so there's, currently, there's three cars that are parked at all times in their driveway, so I don't know how you're going to have people come and drop off when...
There would be room behind the cars for them to pull in and drop off and then leave.
Okay, so you don't need the off-street, the two spaces for the off-street parking?
I consider that our driveway and not...
Okay.
Next to a curb, I guess.
Okay.
Maybe I misunderstood that, yeah.
All right. How many kids total? I'm just curious.
12 at a time.
12 at a time, that's right.
It depends on enrollment, so at the most, there could be 36.
I was just concerned that if there would be any parking in front of my house, I live on the corner, so then that is a very busy intersection, too, and your times would be probably pretty good, since, you know, most people are to work by 8 o'clock.
Right, yep.
And...
And school's already in session for us, like, for the big kids at least, yeah.
And then 3 o'clock, everybody'd be gone?
Yeah, we'd be gone before 3, yep.
Okay. When do you start this?
School starts, our start date is the 30th, or the 29th is our first day, we start the week after Brandon Valley School District starts.
Okay, all right. I used to live next to a daycare, and it was, it ran very smooth, you didn't even know it was a daycare, because their driveway was constantly cleared out, and if you, you know, I have no problem with it, if you, you know, plan to provide that so they can get into your driveway, nobody should even notice...
Right, yeah.
Anything going on, so...
Yep.
So, yeah, but I'm able to call this, if that doesn't happen, I'm not trying to cause a problem here. I'm able to call the city and say, hey, this is not happening, this is, something else is happening, so I just want to make sure that I have a, you know...
Yes.
A backup plan, so, yeah, I have no problem with it.
Thanks.
Does anybody else have any questions?
So Brittany, just to clarify, you're only going to do this until the church gets rebuilt?
Yes, yep, we are hopefully sooner than later, but we definitely do not want to leave the church there, very happy to have the preschool there, and we certainly enjoy the space, but it is a mess at this point, so.
Okay, anybody else have any questions? If not, I would entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve the application.
We have a motion? And a second, any other discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? There you go.
Thank you.
Hopefully they rebuild the church soon. Item number nine is a conditional use application, which I believe they have asked for a continuance. Is this correct, Patrick?
Correct, they asked for a continuance to provide further information, since it was an incomplete application, so they, we gave them 30 days to supplement, if they don't provide us information in 30 days, we will make them refile.
So I guess I would entertain a motion to continue.
So moved.
Second.
Motion and a second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Now for the super fun, interesting parts, if you guys would like to stay, you're more than welcome. Public hearing on industrial uses, Patrick?
So this was something we talked about, what feels like months ago, this is adding the kind of, the store, the commonly-owned space around individually-platted contractor shops, one option is with the commonly-owned space, and the other one is just the individually-platted lots in a row.
Boy, this was a long time ago.
So, this is where that came from, since there are developers looking at doing this type of arrangement in our industrial parks.
Okay. Since this is a public hearing, does anybody have any comments about this? Nope? Okay, we need a motion for this?
Correct, this is the public hearing, so this is an adoption ordinance, so this is a recommendation to the city council to either adopt or deny this amendment.
Okay. Being said, I would entertain a motion.
I would move that we recommend approval to the council.
Second? A motion and a second, any other discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item number 11, Stone Ridge Estates Concept Plans. Is there anyone here to speak to this? We do have someone here to speak to this, hello?
Hi there, Brian Jackson, I'm the Land Development Manager with Ann Busker Companies, just here to answer any questions you might have with this, it's basically just an amendment of a probably previously approved or reviewed plan from many years ago that Stockwell and Juniors had drawn up.
Sure. Anybody have any questions, Mr. Jackson?
So, it appears that what I pulled up is different than the link. Is this on a different page?
I got page 48.
What was this up here then?
If you go to 48, that's where it is, you're on 33 right now.
Yeah, but there's stuff right here for it, is this 31, is that not applicable?
I don't even know where that is, man. That's the Brandon 90 Plaza.
Oh, okay, you're having a hard time.
48.
Sorry about that.
Not a problem. Now we're cooking.
So the, could you explain, I'm looking at your sheet C3, and there are some, there appears to be possibly some parcels to the southwest of blocks 2 through 6. Is that incorrect, or am I interpreting this?
Yep, I got you. I'm going to say lots 2 through 6, so you're talking, if I pointed out right, in this area down here?
Yes.
Okay, no, there would not be any lots, in conversations, they're kind of leaving this area open, you know, we could either extend these lots that are there, in conversations with Tammy, part of it would be if we needed to put in a BMP for drainage purposes, water retention, that would be an option, but it's undevelopable as far as down there, so if we were, if anything were done with it, we would just extend those lots and just make it part of that, lots 1 through 6, and there's no way to access it via a street.
Yeah, because even if it's a BMP, you would need...
We would have to, right, we would go back and redraw and have to have a bench and things, yep, we have some preliminary concept plans in our heads, if we have to go that way, of how we would make some amendments and changes, yep.
Okay. Anybody else have any questions?
What's the address for this, what, where is this?
This is in Stone Ridge.
I'm sorry?
This is in Stone Ridge.
On my rent, or what?
Yes. This would be basically an extension of a neighborhood that's there, this would just be another 45 acres, currently undeveloped, that would be to the northwest side of it.
Okay, anybody else have any questions, otherwise we need a motion to approve the concept plan?
Move to approve.
Do we?
To be safe, probably, yes, but...
To be safe, okay. So I have a motion, Chuck and Brooks. Motion and a second, any other discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Very nice, when are you going to start digging?
Possibly, there's a lot of material to move, the soil conditions are very tricky, lot of sand, lot of different things, so we might do some vault grading later this fall, when things get firm, but you won't see any, you won't see any lots coming out of that until probably a year from now.
Sure.
If we continue to move forward right now, we'll just have to see what's going on with interest rates and everything.
Perfect. Thank you. All right, item number 12, group home and family definition, page 55.
So, this is the latest reiteration, at the last meeting, we had some numbers to correct in the draft, as well as we chose draft one over draft two, so this is, hopefully has everything we talked about in it. I'm still looking into whether the state requires some kind of license or registration or something of that sort, but it's, the, it's very unclear from what I'm seeing, so it might take a call to like the Department of Health or something, to figure out, or just to figure out what they would require on the state end, should someone go that route, the way it looks, is, there's a license required if they seek Medicaid reimbursement, but not necessarily if they are entirely privately funded, but that is still something I need to square away.
Anybody have any questions for Patrick on this? You guys are good with the language? Okay. Since this is a discussion item, we will have this on our next agenda, I would assume, as a public hearing.
I will leave that up to you all, would you like to see it again, should we come to a definitive conclusion on adding licensed or registered or the applicable term, or would you be fine with whatever the result of that, scheduling it for a public hearing?
I would, I would recommend leaving it off.
Okay.
Just because if there was to ever be a private entity that was not, you know, reliant upon public funding, then we would have to go over this all over again. I think the definitions are strict enough, too.
The definitions are strict enough, and we also know that the federal government adheres to most of these. Okay, moving on, item number 13, discussion on allowing septic tanks in R1 low-density residential districts as conditional use or under specified criteria, that's a mouthful. Okay, it's a lot of words, Patrick.
There's a lot in there, so this...
Forty pages.
First couple pages are what's currently on the books here in town, there are so... First couple pages are what's currently on the books here in town. There are some obvious, little errors we have to fix being B.C. instead of I.N.J., but so this is what's currently on the books in Brandon. I kind of, as I want to say Rob mentioned that, oh, on the western part of the state, they are more used to dealing with topography. So I've included examples from, I looked at Rapid City, I looked at Spearfish, and I looked at Sturgis, so there are kind of systems in there as well. Harrisburg is big on doing pre-annexation agreements, so I put in one of those. Obviously, it's not going to be word-for-word accurate, it's just kind of an example of what that looks like. I included a Mitchell example. There's one in there, it might have been Sturgis at the end, where they have a whole zoning district for large lot, single-family, if that's the way you wanted to go.
Which page is, which page is that on?
The, it's near the. Um, Spearfish has the large lot. It starts on page ninety-one. And what we would do there is then probably set the minimum square footage of the lot at being quite a bit larger than what exists in R-one right now. And after that, there's Spearfish had some annexation request requirement that had a little bit about water systems, and I thought was interesting. That's on page ninety-seven, and just to provide information, there's Harrisburg's pre-annexation agreement, so a little bit to look at. Just, there's probably no one solid way to do it. It's what we want to do, and we'll try to find the, the best way to make sure we do it correctly.
Okay.
So it's, it's a lot to look over.
So this is a discussion item. Anybody have any discussion? Rob, do you feel lonely over there? Okay.
Since we do have quite a bit of public, the reason why this came up is Brandon is surrounded by rivers. It is very difficult to get sewer through a river. Water's a little bit easier, but sewer service, so that limits Brandon's ability to expand, since city ordinance requires that property in the city be serviced by the city. So generally, septic tanks aren't allowed, so this, they're looking at ways to accommodate growth with the understanding that it's going to be very expensive to get sewer there, so should there be some alternative arrangement? A lot of communities say you're allowed to keep your septic tank until we're within a certain distance, and then you have a certain amount of time to install everything you need to do to access it. So that's where the discussion kind of is right now, since we do have areas that are in close proximity to Brandon, they're just very difficult to service, mostly from an expense side of things, because if you have enough money, you can probably do most anything, but it comes down to money.
Okay, anybody else have any other thoughts for Patrick, direction? Would you like to take some time to digest all the words he put on the page?
There's a lot of material we threw through.
There's a lot of material, yes.
Um, I did not get a chance to read through all of it. Um, I guess in my mind, if, if we proceed forward with something like this, I think we should require that the developers put in the utilities, like we talked about last time. I think the residences should be required to, um, be constructed with the lines connected out to the city.
Yep.
Or to the, to the public sewer system.
Right away.
Um, upfront, even though they, you know, so that it makes it easier to switch over later on. Uh, otherwise, I think we'll get a lot of kickback that.
Did you find that in anywhere, Patrick, the requirement to?
I did not find any language, pre-requiring
Infrastructure.
Infrastructure to exist prior to hookup, but that does not seem like an unreasonable thing to do, just because you're gonna run into a situation thirty years down the road, you're finally able to get sewer there, then people will have, all of a sudden, be given a pretty hefty bill, and that probably wouldn't go over all that well.
Yeah, well, we want, we want them, we want to make it easy for them to switch over. We don't want it to be a burden. We don't want them to have to dig up their, their landscaping, and their flower gardens, and their trees and whatnot, to put in a sewer line out to the right of way, you know, and repairing concrete and pavement and things like that. So I think as long as those, those elements are constructed, when they get the permit and they build the house, I would be okay with it. I don't know if, if, I think, you know, I don't think we need to put a minimum lot size on, um, as long as we do require, um, engineered calculations.
Okay.
Which I think, I don't remember who was here last time, but he suggested that we do, that we should require uh, an engineered system. So I think as long as it's engineered and we have enough lot size to accommodate it.
Sure.
I don't, I don't think the size of the lot should really dictate it.
And as long as the infrastructure's there to flip over at some point in time anyway. And I would assume that when you look at Spearfish and Rapid, the, the, the kind of places they're building, they would never get services to them, really. I would assume, anyway.
That's probably a reasonable assumption.
They have more to deal with than just a couple of rivers. Okay? Anybody else have any thoughts or comments on this?
I agree with Brian.
Would you like to see Patrick write something, sort of in accordance to what Brian just said?
Sure.
More words, Patrick?
Yep.
It's a good thing you went to law school.
Charged by the word.
That's why we hired you.
I said not anymore.
Okay, anybody else have anything to add to that, or suggestions to give to him, or just wait to see what he comes up with, and then we'll pull it apart? All right. I believe we've discussed that, so let's move to item number fourteen, discussion on institutional zones. Patrick, would you like to sort of?
So, we had this discussion last time, and kind of the, it came down to if the central business district works, why change things? So the reason why it's back is this was previously rezoned to institutional. So currently, City Hall here is institutional, so it is out of compliance with the zoning code because of setbacks and everything else. So this, what in front of you was written to try to, if it was going to stay as institutional, we, there's some things to work through. Brian also mentioned that if it was easy enough just to rezone it back to central business, then that would solve the issues, so.
So anybody have any thoughts on this? I will tell you that I think that it was already in existence as central, as central business. It worked as central business. We chose to change it to institutional. The institutional zone was designed not for this parcel. So I'm not a hundred percent sure, yes.
For larger, was for larger parcels.
Yes. So, yeah, Brooke?
Yeah, I, I agree. I still wouldn't want to try to change the institutional to accommodate this parcel, I think. Hindsight being twenty-twenty, maybe putting it, considering putting it back to general business is probably best.
Central business.
Cent, central business.
There you go.
I would agree.
Yeah. So I would, yeah, you guys would recommend that maybe we, the city would come back with a rezone? Instead of changing the institutional zone, we just recommend they rezone it? Does that work for you, Patrick?
That works for us.
Okay. We would like them to have to come stand in front of the podium and ask for the rezone?
Let's see.
Yeah.
Do you want the mayor to do that?
Yeah, the mayor can do that. It'll be awesome. All right, item number fifteen is the building permits. It appears as though Paul is very busy roofing houses. Nice job, Paul.
Checking.
What?
Checking, sir, one by one.
One by one, shingle by shingle? There's a lot of roofs getting done, man.
Yeah. There'll be more coming up.
Last I spoke to Melissa, we're about thirty million in this year in reshingling.
At least you can still get shingles.
At least you can still get shingles, I guess. Holy cow. Thirty, this year?
Yep. She ran the reports for me this afternoon, and.
That's a lot.
A little bit less housing permits, but a lot of reshingling.
A lot of reshingling. We keep getting hit by the, the, whatever they're called. The derachos. Name storms. It's awesome. All right. Having nothing else on the agenda, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
So move.
Second.
Motion and a second to adjourn. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? We are adjourned at seven-ten. Thank you all.